Next item, please.
Special reports, air conditioning, Mr. Thomas Wall.
Well, we know there's no shortage in this room.
Is he still here?
I'm freezing.
Well, we went from one extreme to the next in the other room. There was not any.
Good evening, trustees.
Good evening.
I can help you with that, so.
I asked Bill.
I'm here to update you on the air conditioning project and where we stand on it. At Dr. Maleko's direction of the Board of Education, we move forward with a, in response to community concerns, a short term and a long term air conditioning strategy. The short term strategy is to create air conditioned spaces in buildings that staff and students can rotate into on the very warm days so they can get a little bit of relief during the day. We're currently evaluating individual buildings for current AC capability. We've got 30 buildings. We've got about 3,200 square feet. About 2,500 square feet of that is un-air-conditioned space. So, the average age of our buildings is 66 years old, just a little too big. And that kind of relates into how we go about upgrading the AC capability in buildings that are older. The focus is on the media centers. There are larger spaces that can accommodate multiple classrooms at one time and also would support summer programs that many of the schools have. Anything that we do to upgrade the air conditioning on a short-term basis, we want to make sure it doesn't, is, we want to make sure it's compatible with any future changes. We want to make sure that it's going to be useful, that it's just not a throwaway item, that it can be incorporated into further improvements. That was something we wanted to make sure of. The current status is that we've budgeted $500,000. We're currently evaluating the elementary schools. We have JCI in helping us specify equipment to install in the spaces. We're doing some electrical load analysis for just the media centers right now to find out what kind of equipment it can accommodate. And we're going to prioritize those schools through need and the ease of install. Here's a list, a spreadsheet of the schools and whether they have AC in the media center presently. Those that don't, we've listed out the square footage there of the space that we're going to have to cool. And I've given you sort of a summary in the far-right column of what buildings have air conditioning now. A point, limited is, means that it's small offices, computer equipment rooms, not really places where people can come and get relief from the warm weather. So, the next steps on the short-term strategy is to coordinate with the infrastructure task force. We want to complete the elementary school upgrades by the spring of 2019, so next spring. We want to begin work on the middle school and the K-8 buildings right now and evaluate those areas. And we hope to complete those buildings in the short-term upgrade by fall of 2019, so next fall, not this fall, but fall next. The long-term strategy is to begin technical evaluation district-wide for whole-building air conditioning upgrades. We need to know how those are going to impact current HVAC systems. We need to know how they're going to impact existing electrical capabilities of the building. We need to know the impact on the utility costs. We're at a very good spot right now in utility costs. I think one thing we can count on is that utilities will not remain low forever. We need to talk about construction timelines for these upgrades if we go to a whole building and the shortened construction period that we have in the summers. And we need to coordinate all this with the infrastructure task force. We need to make sure that they understand the steps that'll need to be taken so they can make an informed decision on what they believe is appropriate. The long-term strategy, we've put together some numbers with the help of Clark Construction. They're very basic numbers. They're going to change as we get into more technical analysis of the building, but it's roughly based on current actual construction costs, about $20 a square foot. At 2.5 million square feet, at 20 million a square foot is about $50 million. So, that's a big number, but it also is going to go hand-in-hand with the infrastructure committee's decision, potential decisions moving forward on potential bond issues and the use of that bond money. So, the numbers are going to change depending on the scope of other projects. If there's a major renovation project at a school, then the cost of the air conditioning comes down. But we're solely going in to do an air conditioning upgrade, then the price is going to be a little bit, a little bit higher. One of the things that is not included in that price is potential electrical upgrades. And that also creates another mix for the infrastructure committee because on some of these buildings, we may be right on the edge of the power, electrical power that we need. But an LED upgrade may give us the cushion that we need to not upgrade the electrical power. So, there's kind of a lot of moving pieces for the committee to consider when we bring this forward. Another point is that inflation in the construction industry right now is pretty intense. Wages are going up, supply costs are going up. So, you can expect a minimum of a 5% inflation rate per year, this amount. Any questions?
Trustee Petlicoff.
When we talk about the inflation, I also am a little bit concerned because I would assume that a lot of these, we've got the new tariffs and the trade wars and everything, and a lot of these products probably are built overseas when it comes to the air conditioning units themselves and whatever types of, so.
I think we can expect things to not go smoothly.
Yes, I was going to say, I don't know, I don't know if that's going to complicate things the longer it takes for us to move forward on this.
So, it's really a consideration in all aspects of construction.
Yeah.
I mean, steel, the steel columns and beams we're putting up at Dearborn High School right now, those are pre-tariff. So, I don't know what that would cost.
Stockpile.
Well, in case you want to throw anything else in, I mean, you will.
So, have the possibility, very real possibility, the prognostication by most climate science scientists that we'll be experiencing more volatile weather and hotter summers, and it'll happen sooner. I mean, we've, most of us have seen that in our lifetime.
Trustee Thorpe.
I'm a little bit frustrated with where we're at right now. We brought this up last fall when we had some warm days. There was all winter to figure out what was going on. There was springtime to go into those buildings and come up with the plans. Why are we not doing anything during the summer when we know those kids are going back to school, I hate to admit that it's probably like five weeks, and there's going to be hot days and they're still going to be sitting there? And we're saying that the elementary is going to be upgraded by spring of 19, which tells me unless you can get it done in two weeks during the mid-winter break, we're interrupting the time in the media center. Why is it taking us so long? Why aren't we taking advantage of this summer to get this done?
We gave, took the go-ahead from the Building Insight Committee to move forward on it. It's not, you know, my, it's not my authority to move forward on specific items. We need the Board of Education to come forward and Dr. Maleko, and you did that. And as soon as I received that direction, I moved forward.
I think we did this a little bit quicker, though. I think when we were meeting a few months ago, we were under the assumption that we were moving ahead. And I thought that meant get it in during the summer when the buildings are empty and it's a lot easier to do it, not telling everyone that, sorry, you've got to wait another half year to a full year before you're going to be able to get upgraded. And again, we're losing instructional time then in those media centers because I'm assuming that they're not going to be able to be used while they're putting in an AC.
We would work around school schedule. We wouldn't be impacting the classrooms. But I think, you know, a technical solution that you're talking about, the timelines, you know, we have great expectations, but that's a quick timeline to turn around, engineering, electrical analysis, and the like.
I think if you've got a year, really, we're talking about 20 months or something, we should have been able to do this quicker. We should have been able to do it in under 10 months. That's my take on it. I don't want to wait for the infrastructure committee to come back, which is going to be that on a millage. We know we can afford this. Why didn't we do it sooner?
So, we're moving forward on the $500,000 short-term strategy. That's going forward now. We hope to have it founded in by the end of the summer. The others will follow as soon as we can specify them this summer.
So, the end of this summer?
Correct.
So, one of the schools will have it.
We hope.
Well, we'll meet with the operations team and see what we can do. I mean, the issue in the summer is we have multiple construction projects going on all over the district. So, it's not, you know, as you prioritize, we're trying to hit that window of not having students. So, there's normal maintenance and upgrades that go on all over, and it's a constant push, having been at the building, understanding that it is. And it's not that much, that big of a window when you look at the summer. But having said that, we'll look at it with, we'll get together, we'll set up a meeting and see if there's anything we can do to possibly expedite it. But I can tell you that it's, you know, constant. There's construction going on all over and upgrades with engineers. So, that could be part of it, but we'll, we'll take your input, Trustee Thorpe, and we'll see what we can do to possibly enhance that moving forward.
I think if you went to the teachers and the students and the parents and they prioritized, air conditioning would be near the top of their list.
Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Action items. Special consideration of an action item, and we do have three supplements at the table, '20, '21, and '22.
Correct.
Now, I want to add that '22, we're going to go ahead and add at the end of that paragraph under recommended action, comma, with stipulation to be approved by the board. And we'll get to that when I read it. So, special consideration. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below. Recommended action, move that action items numbered 1 through 22 be approved as recommended in this agenda.
So moved.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir. Trustee Barry.
Dr. Maleko. Supplement, I guess this would be items through 10 through 12. I'm not going to mention the name, but we have an employee retiring and is there rescission? Is that?
That was an adjustment because she had put in, and it was an error, it was supposed to, it was put in as a resignation, so it's a rescinding of the resignation and it's putting her in as a retirement.
She went to retirement.
Yeah, but it's not a, it's not a rescinding of the process because we don't, you know, we've never done that. This is just, it was listed under the wrong item as resignation rather than retirement. So, this is a correction to put it under retirement.
Okay.
Because the individual didn't want it to be listed officially as a resignation because she is retiring.
Yeah.
And the other thing I have is Board Report 2018, change orders. I mean, nobody likes change orders when we get into a project. And I was looking at this and it seems like it's something part of the business, but there is an item on here. It says off-site storage of purchased.
Which item?
Oh, the, for the cafeteria.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that, too.
That would be, can I have Mr. Wall, or Mr. Rango maybe come up?
Item number eight, I'm sorry.
Number eight.
I wrote it down, but.
Number eight.
Item number eight, the change orders.
Okay, and the question was?
The item, it says off-site storage of purchased food service equipment. We're paying to store equipment someplace?
Correct. We didn't have enough, anywhere near enough room in the warehouse to store the extra equipment that was, that we had to remove from the cafeteria, the food service area so we could bring in the new stuff. We sense at that time, we sense, we've now cleaned out the warehouse and we are going to put some of that equipment, the old stuff, out for auction. But the new stuff, we just had no place for them to put it, so we asked them to hold on to it in lieu of us putting it some, again, someplace that we didn't have room for.
That's the first thing I thought of, is we have a warehouse, that's a huge warehouse.
Well, again, the warehouse was just beyond belief in terms of available space. It was really bad. I mean, I can't, I can't describe it any worse than that or any better than that, so.
There's a cost to that. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. Any other items? So, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of this motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? It's unanimous, 6-0. Next item, please.
Summary of agenda action items. Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of blanket purchase orders. Number three, approval of Chromebooks and licenses for Duval. Numbers four through six, approval of ratifying change orders for physical therapists. Number seven, approval of advanced ad membership. Number eight, approval of change orders. Number nine, approval of sound system at Salina Intermediate and Stout. Number 10 through 13, approval of non-instructional and instructional personal items for P through 12. Number 14, approval of 2018 high school graduates. Congratulations to all. Number 15, approval of representatives for Wayne Resa Parent Advisory Committee. Number 16, approval of cooperative agreement with Romulus Community Schools. Number 17, approval of appointment of assistant principal at Smith Middle School. I don't have his name under here. Yeah, what is it? I'm sorry. Mark Rumel. Approval, number 18, approval of policy update changes. Number 19, approval of donations. Number 20, Ms. Zahra Zariq appointed as principal at Becker Elementary School. Congratulations. And number 21, Ms. Linda Lazar appointed the principal at Howard Elementary School. Congratulations. And number 22, Dearborn, the Board of Education, we met earlier, having heard and considered the evidence in the case of a Smith Middle School student shall be permanently expelled from Smith School and the Dearborn Public School District for one year, 180 days, with stipulations to be approved by the board.
The superintendent would like to introduce.
Sure.
Newly-appointed people.
Thank you, Dr. Mead. So, the first thing is Mr. Rumel is not able to be here because he's out of town, but he's very excited and he'll come to visit with the board at the next meeting when he's back from his family trip. But I'd like to first call up Ms. Zahra Zariq, the new principal of Becker. If we can give her a big round of applause.
I'm very excited for this opportunity. I'm very confident that my experiences as both a classroom teacher and as an assistant principal have truly prepared me for this. I'm excited to work with the Becker community at large, to get to know all the students and build relationships with the families and the teachers and the entire community. I thank you all for entrusting me with this position. I will always strive to work for excellence and with the utmost integrity. And thank you so much for this wonderful privilege. Thank you.
I believe you're the, I believe you're the fourth principal of Becker School, and Becker School is very lucky. They've had some, three great leaders, and now you're the fourth.
They are a wonderful building. They've had an excellent foundation, and, and I'm looking forward to continuing that, you know, that goal for excellence.
Appreciate it.
Truly, it's a, it's a beautiful building, and I'm already, I already have plans with Ms. Hassan to meet up with her tomorrow morning to walk the school.
And Ms. Hassan being here to, to support you for your appointment, so.
Congratulations. I mean, her reputation precedes her. And I want to specifically thank you two for stepping up to the plate at Woodworth.
Thank you so much.
And I think, you know, talking to the staff and the students and the parents at Woodworth, too, I mean, it's so nice to just hear so many compliments. And I think you at Becker, you do know there was great leadership there, and I'm glad, I'm not surprised that hopefully you'll be collaborating. I mean, this district is one district. So, congratulations and so very well deserved and happy for you.
Thank you so much. Truly, I'm blessed to be in this district. I feel like I've always been supported here. I've been, I was a student here. My kids were students here, and, you know, I have a daughter who I brought with me that just graduated.
City of Taping you proudly.
Oh, I see. Truly, it's a blessing. I'm, I wouldn't wish to be anywhere else. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you again, Dr. Maleko, for the opportunity. Thank you.
De meano. You're welcome.
That's so cute.
Hugs all around.
So, next I'm going to ask Ms. Linda Lazar to come up, the new principal of Howard Elementary. If we can give her a big round of applause, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I want to send a message to my McCullough team. The running joke at McCullough is that they train the best principals when they get their APs. So, I want to thank them for teaching me well and helping me to get to where I am today. I'm extremely humbled by the people involved in all five of the interviews that have brought us to this point, and I thank them for their recommendation. And I thank you, the board, for approving that recommendation and entrusting me with one of our district's gems. It's a responsibility that I don't take lightly, and I'm excited at the opportunity to lead that school. I want to mention that I have my husband and my daughter with me today. My husband is a Howard alumni. So, he's wearing that proudly, and my daughter is wearing his old sweatshirt from Howard circa 1981 when the students approved the dragons as their mascot.
Can she come up and show it off?
Nada, you want to come up here? Come show the sweatshirt.
Oh, it's so good.
Our sweatshirt over there.
So, we're, we're very excited about continuing our involvement and expanding our involvement with the Howard community as well.
All right.
Oh, cool. Kept it in good condition, too.
Awesome.
So, thank you so much.
Nada is, is her mom's biggest cheerleader. And every single event, every single time she's been up here, Nada has been back, just jumping up and down and cheering her on. So, that's always great to see.
If I could just mention in follow-up, too, that just so that everyone's aware, and the board will get the info, but now that those principals are settled, we still have the one executive director open, but now we have some potential moves, not, not a lot, but there'll be some announcements of some assistant principal because obviously we have some vacancies based on filling them. And so, that's why we were waiting for those announcements, working with the union, and I've been working with Dr. Tyne on some of those moves. So, that, more to come. Announcements will be put forward. Thank you.
But it, but it looks like we're going to have everybody in place before the start of the school year.
Correct.
So, our students will be ready to welcome their new principals and assistant principals, which is a good thing, that, that they'll be there.
And that's why I appreciate the board allowing us, if you recall, last year, we moved this meeting to later in July to allow us for that specific purpose, to get principals in place. So, thank you.
And teachers. I noticed there's lots of new teachers, social workers, school nurse, so, yeah, you're really gearing up, Ms. Ali Bazi. So, yeah, and, and I love, I mean, what's better than new hires of teachers? That's, that's great. It's really wonderful to see.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Discussion item, policy updates, use of cellular phones, electronic mail. Dr. Juan Maleko.
Good evening.
Hi.
So, today we voted on the policies that the policy committee approved last month, which was the technology-based information system and then also the staff use of cellular phones. And last month, I said that I would have a few more technology policies that would be the discussion items for today. So, today we're looking at the use of cellular phones is 5518 and also 7540.05 is electronic mail. And the proposed language for both of the policies is really just to bring it up to date. And the use of cellular phones is kind of outdated. It was from '03, 2003. And so, it talks about, without reading all of it, it talks about how the board recognizes the changes in how society and how students use cellphones and how families use cellphones. And so, it talks about that there's an increase in the use and that we understand, the board understands that family members rely on the cellphones. And then it also talks about respecting the allowed times and conditions and that it's with staff permission and that if there's violations of when the cellphones are used that could result in disciplinary action. But really, it's more of a policy that's applicable to today versus the one that we used to have. And of course, that we're not responsible for lost, damaged, or stolen phones as well. So, with the policy committee, since we didn't meet today, I will still run this past them again, and they've all had electronic versions of it as well, and our attorney always reviews these also. So, they'll get another glimpse of it, and I also handed the committee.
Sure. I got a quick question because I did notice that, that it eliminated the grade levels for the, for the reason you're stating, that families are using them differently. But have we had any conversations with school principals or those who are going to have to manage the buildings, especially with the younger students who may not be as respectful of how they bring a cellphone onto the school premises so that we know that we're not creating a problem down the line for them?
Right. A specific conversation or discussion with the elementary principals has not occurred. My understanding is that, I mean, usually problems find their way to us, but that would be a proactive measure that we could put in place even at the start of the school year. We have our general administrators meeting in August, and we could put that on the agenda. All the middle schools and the high schools have cellphone policies that are, that have been implemented.
Right.
And are really pretty successful in, in most cases. And you can see that when you're in the different buildings. But I will definitely look into the elementary. I mean, I don't know unless if.
We could, we could run it through.
Dr. Chokol or anyone has had any elementary forum conversations about cellphones?
Not recently.
Not recently. So, that would be, that's a good idea. Yeah, because they're getting younger and younger.
Yeah, because they're getting younger and younger, and that's fine, but it could, it could create problems that we're not anticipating or, or looking at. And when this was done in 2003, cellphones were more costly and it wasn't as popular a thing to hand to your, you know.
Absolutely.
Fifth grader as it is now. And recognizing that, I just want to make sure that we're not creating another problem on the side by reconsidering this.
Yeah, absolutely. That's proactive, we definitely will take a proactive approach to that. We'll get it on our agenda. So, that was one of them. The other one's the electronic mail. And we eliminated some parts of it. Really, there's different sections to it. There's electronic mail is the name of the policy, and then there's public records, retention, unauthorized email, and authorized use and training. The only section that has any changes that are recommended is the section that talks about, like, if the district staff member's concerned about their storage capacity of their email. So, with the technology that we use today, storage isn't an issue, fortunately. So, that was eliminated. And then it talks about, like, the staff member shouldn't exceed 10 megabytes, which we wouldn't do things that way anymore. We have a network now that can provide all the megabytes that we need. So, we eliminated that. But we didn't add anything into this policy. We just made sure that it was up to date about how to use the electronic mail. Any questions?
Any questions, anybody?
So, these are, I'll always add the policies in board briefs with a link to them. So, for those of you that are not on the policy committees, you could always, like you did, Trustee Petlicoff. And I appreciate that. I always know, I always know you're reading.
You wonder if any of us are looking at this.
No, I know you are. You tell me that you are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Board of Education Business. First item is acknowledgment of correspondence.
Hearing none. Next item.
Next item, board member, committee, and organization reports.
Hearing none. Next item, please.
Board member or superintendent commentary.
Hearing none. Next item, please.
Did you want to say?
No, I didn't.
You're trying to back him off.
How is he going to say something now?
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I didn't mean to. Oh, no, you didn't. It was comical. We enjoyed it.
We thought it was fun.
We enjoyed it. Yeah, we both.
Next item, please.
Request for information and/or future agenda items.
Yes. Trustee Thorpe.
I'd like to request a report on the teacher and staff turnover in the schools from year to year. I know there could be many reasons for people leaving the district. It could be due to retirement. It could be that they're requesting a reassignment or that the administration is submitting a reassignment to them. But I also want to know about the people that are leaving the district, whether it's because they're going to another district or they're switching careers. Just want to get an idea for what's going on in a building-to-building basis each year. Thanks.
Just a question. Do, do people, when they leave the system, do they have to identify why they are leaving? Is it possible that we might not have that information?
Not in a lot of detail, but we usually have an idea.
We have a survey, though, that we allow them, if they want to choose, if they choose to, they're allowed to give us that information that HR then disaggregates.
So we have an exit survey that's optional, so we'll reference that, and then a lot of times in their resignation letters, they tell us, like, I'm going to law school, or I decided to, you know, I'm having my fourth child and I'm gonna stay home, or, so sometimes they offer that information, sometimes they don't. There have been cases in the past where we've reached out to teachers and asked, or people that have left and asked them why they left, but we would start with the exit surveys first, then we go through the emails, but we'll do it, we'll get that.
Can you, do you have any idea what percent of people actually complete the exit paper? Exit questionnaire?
I don't, but I could get that.
Would it be small, do you think?
You know, it was a lot more than what I anticipated when I checked it last.
So you could have some data.
So we could have some, yes. Yeah, I was actually surprised that so many people took it when I did look, 'cause I anticipated that many people wouldn't take it, but all the data we can get, you know, the more we can get, the better, really.
And we'd have no problem figuring out the reassignment, whether it was that they were requesting it or if the administration was requesting it.
Transfers from building to building?
Right.
Right, so for a transfer process, they would only, a teacher would only be transferred if they chose to be transferred because they put in for a transfer to a building. Now, we do have the superintendent's right for involuntary transfers, which is very rarely used, so if there was an involuntary transfer, it would be maybe one a year, if that. So if they've transferred from building to building, it was from their choice. Lot of times, teachers put in transfers to several different buildings, and then every year, when each building gets their transfer list from Human Resources, they start seeing who's qualified for the vacancy they're filling, then they call those people and they offer them interviews, and then most people will decline the interview because they're put, they're set, they're happy where they're at, but some people will want the change and they'll go for the interview and they'll go from there, but that's, transfers are really only if they put in for a transfer.
Can I comment on the involuntary? That was a traditional language that was in previous contracts that's just kinda stuck, but generally, it's not done that way. Generally, that term involuntary, normally what's happening is everyone tends to agree it's in the best interest of the district and students, and then I'll approve it after. Now, that doesn't mean that in a case, I can't, I could do that, but I'm gonna tell you, I don't think I've done that since I've been superintendent where someone said, no, I don't really wanna go. So I just wanna clarify that that language is something that's been around, traditionally the involuntary, but that really, we're doing it in the best interests of, a lot of times, the staff and the students, and normally what'll happen is it's the incoming, outgoing principal, a lot of times, you know, that staff member and the union is consulted, but because of the process, there's no way for them to do it, and we may say, like, we have a shortage of a certification area of math, and we can't get them there, then I'm doing it because I have that authority to do it under the, so I like to say it's done for a positive, although that language has been there for many years.
Trustee Thorpe, some information that we can't get would be the reasons why people transfer.
Right, well, but you would know that it's they're requesting the transfer.
Yes.
So you don't know why, but you know, there's some reason that they.
Are requesting to transfer, right, yeah.
Thank you. Well, Trustee Petlicoff.
I, I was thinking about when Trustee Thorpe expressed frustration with the leg time for the air conditioning and that we've been having this conversation for a while, but I'm thinking that, as I reflect back, that possibly we didn't give a real clear direction of the urgency that we wanted to move this forward, and I'm thinking part of the issue is, is that I know in the past, when I was on the board many years ago, our committees met a lot more frequently, and the Building and Site Committee hasn't really met that often, quite frankly, which could have encouraged a faster track of moving this idea forward. Now, no committee can make a decision on behalf of the full board, but, but things can be brought through committee to the board after we've had those discussions. That would then be a directive at a board meeting to say, look, we wanna see this done in X amount of time or something so that we're sure that it's being focused on. So I, and I'm not pointing fingers or blaming any one side or another, I'm just suggesting that if, so that in the future, that we all have a clear understanding of what we're discussing and the timeframes that we would like to see them play out, that possibly we should take advantage of our committees when these kinds of conversations are begun, and that we make sure that we meet more regularly. I know we don't all want meetings every single month, but at least to keep everybody updated and, and moving a process along and knowing where it's at.
Thank you.
Trustee Barry.
Dr. Malik, if we can get a report on the process for RFPs, request for proposals, and if we do anything to train local businesses, not only the Dearborn, Dearborn Heights area, Wayne County, just to reach out to small businesses, part of the community.
Anybody else? Next item, please.
Future meeting dates, Monday, August 13th, 2018, Henry Ford College Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Henry Ford College Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Roswell Boardroom. Monday, August 20th, 2018, P through 12, Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, September 10th, 2018, P through 12, Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom.
You're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.